Maggie, did you Maggie vote yet?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, excuse me.
It's okay.
Dave voted aye. Kim?
Yes, thanks.
Bob?
Yes.
Melissa?
Epstein.
Thank you. Paul?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. So we have unanimous with the exception of one, I shouldn't say unanimous, I'm sorry. We have one abstention and the rest are all ayes on approval of the public minutes. On the non-public minutes from May 14th, are there any changes or corrections on those?
Not seeing any hands go up, Helen.
Thank you. Travis?
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, so sorry, thank you. A second on that?
Second, Bob.
Thank you. Travis?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Abstention for absence.
Thank you. Bob?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. So we have one abstention and the rest are all in the affirmative. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move along to the superintendent's report and I'll turn it over to Dr. Ryan for a little bit here.
Thank you very much, Helen. Last night, we had our joint board meeting and we had our whole team share out any of our updates to our operations management under COVID-19. Some of the highlights include our return to work, return to school committees. We have four of them. They are fully staffed. I see that Mrs. Hodgson is on the line. Thank you for allowing Andrew to participate. I'll be talking with him on Friday. He's a junior at the high school. Rachel Poole, and you all know her as our speaker every other, she reports out for CMS every other meeting. She's going to be our CMS representative. We have a parent from the community who works at SNHU in the innovation lab. He's the deputy director there. And they're all on my team, hand-selected. And then there are three other teams naturally that have parent reps and student reps. We have 16 other employees who are also on each of those committees. They've had an orientation as well as met once and in some cases twice on their respective areas. Those include a full return to school, so that's one committee, a full remote return, so remaining on the remote instruction and support, that's a second committee. A third committee is returning full but with interruption, so in the event that there's another wave, moving back onto remote instruction shortly after starting school. And then the committee that I'm leading, which is the hybrid committee, which is a combination of myriad factors, whether it be having some elementary school students, having the elementary school students return but keeping the secondary students home on remote, having all of our students return but alternating days or alternating classes, some in the morning, some in the afternoon. So there's a lot of information that right now is being gathered by members of those committees. And the makeup of those committees are not just teachers and administrators, but we also have a facilities person there. We have a food service person. We have union presidents that are on that committee. We have paraprofessionals who are on those committees. We have curriculum coordinators, school psychologists, guidance counselors. So we're trying to get the perspective of every person who is involved with a typical day at a school to get the impact of what this particular model, any one of those four models would have on their role. And their job on the committee is to go out and communicate with other like roles, so their peers or their colleagues, and gather information from them so that they can bring that group think back to this committee and report out to the rest of it. We're gathering the information, we're organizing it. We have an organizational document that we're just starting to fill in now. And we'll start making that available to the joint board in a couple of weeks. I think three weeks, if not four, that will have all of this information as well as some identified patterns and themes that we see relative to the reality of going back to school in September in a traditional format or a non-traditional format or a combination thereof. There's still a lot of work to be done. The state is certainly conducting its own return to school task force. I know that some members of our audience are members, or at least participating as listeners or in work groups of that task force. We continue to receive information from other states who are looking at return to school plans. We're conducting our research by reading the impact of return to school in other countries. Denmark and Japan come to mind. We're keeping an eye on CDC guidelines and the governor's emergency orders and any changes on the stay-at-home orders and trying to keep everybody updated through our letters that we're sending home predominantly on Saturdays at this point relative to our COVID-19 updates. There haven't been, there hasn't been a lot of other work that's been done since the last time we met as a board because it's all consuming on ensuring that what we have in store for the fall is the very best plan for the most amount of our stakeholders as possible. One of the things that I said last night to the joint board, and I'll say it to our board individually, is that not everybody is going to be happy with our result in terms of our decision. And that's just a fact of life and we all have to be prepared for that. But we're going to continue to work towards it. Our goal would be to have a plan put in front of the joint board by the middle to end of July, at which point we would have a plan for our community to understand on our return to school in the fall. There are so many other if factors right now. Transportation remains a question mark until we get some guidance from the state on that and the Department of Education. Our transportation coordinator is going to be working with first student because naturally they have parameters that they're going to have to follow. Interscholastic athletics are still a question mark and we're going to have to subscribe to the NHI AA on what their guidelines are going to be. But we're going to continue to move forward, we're going to continue to plan, we're going to continue to inform everybody as we do so. And so that would be the majority of the update that I have relative to COVID-19. And I don't know, Helen, if you wanted to entertain any questions or permit any questions. We did have that opportunity last night, but there may have been some questions that have come up since then.
Sure, thank you, David. Are there any questions for David? I know that we did have that opportunity last evening, but if there are any additional questions that folks might want to ask relative to this?
Helen, Kim has her hand up, Helen.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Helen. Dr. Ryan, just based on a phone call I got earlier today from a parent, I know you said the interscholastic sports will have to follow NHIA, but could you just clarify and share, is there like a member focusing on this on this committee?
Not just yet, because we have a direct connection with the executive director at the NHI AA. We rely on that connection through our athletic director and our high school principal. So while the committees aren't necessarily planning for anything athletic-related, we're going to be, and we have been in touch with Jeff Collins through either Bill Ball or Mike Monahan, just getting an update on where he believes the NHI AA is. So once they provide some outlook on what the fall might look like, we can then, we'll work with Mr. Ball to plan accordingly. I mean, as a, I mean, I've been involved in athletics for a long time, but I'm a lemon when it comes to athletic administration. But given the current guidelines, I don't see how we'd be able to participate in any sport that provides physical contact. So that, you know, is near and dear to Exodus Heart. And so I trust that Mr. Ball is going to keep a pretty keen eye on the news coming out of Concord and talk to Mr. Collins.
Thanks for clarifying that.
All right. Any other board members have a question relative to David's COVID-19 report? I saw that a question came across the screen and we'll be talking about graduation proposals in just a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Helen, Melissa had her hand up and then Mr. Hall as well.
Sure, Melissa, thank you.
So just a two-part question. So the committees are still talking at this point in time, I understand that. You've talked about not having anything until the middle of summer. I'm just curious if the committees are considering possibly provisions for parents who won't, if let's say we open schools back up, but there are some parents that just aren't ready to send their kids back. Are the committees considering provisions possibly for those scenarios?
Yes. And I think we had that question last night as well. And we recognize that not all parents will be prepared to send their children back if we in fact do return in person. We certainly want to acknowledge and respect that. And we as a group are considered, we're wrestling with all of those scenarios. So last night, we started to rattle off some of the what-ifs and what-if this and what-if that. You know, as Travis said, we probably could have been there for five or six hours with those scenarios. That's exactly what these committees are wrestling with. So it's not so much we're sitting around a table, a virtual table, talking as much as each committee member is going out and gathering that information. So Melissa, there are people that are just like you that are asking our committee member, so what if X or what if this or that, and they're gathering that and they're bringing that back to the table and delivering that. So all of those questions are actually being asked by members of the community, whether they be teachers, secretaries, paraprofessionals, parents, students, other stakeholders. I'd be very surprised if we leave a question off when we provide that report to you in three to four weeks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Bob?
My question was really dates. It's hard to come up with dates right now, but certainly we would have plenty of time before something would go into effect.
That's correct, Bob. Our academic calendar right now has students return to school August 31st, which still gives us ample time. And so we'll continue to plan with that date in mind. We don't want to rush, but we all, because things are changing too, right? So health guidelines could change over the next three to four weeks and could blow up some parts of the plans that we develop, which is the really difficult part is, one, we've never done this before. And two, things continue to change. So we're going to try to have something in the joint board's hands so in turn we could wrestle and have something in our family's hands well before it's time to head back to school, so everybody can plan and know what they're going to be doing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other board questions for David on COVID-19 reporting?
Helen, I don't see any other board members asking anything.
Thank you. All right, David, thank you. Would you like to continue with the rest of your report?
I would, thank you. So I would like to, at this time, can I make the nomination, Helen?
I would be happy to have you do that, sir.
Then I shall, having had the opportunity to meet and interview our candidate for the adult education director position. At this time, I would like to nominate Michelle Voto to serve as our next adult director of education, excuse me, director of adult education in the cooperative school district. And I would be looking for a motion to approve at this time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve Michelle Voto for our new adult education director?
This is Bob Hall and I move Michelle Voto.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Kim, seconds.
Thank you. We'll take a vote on this. Travis?
Aye.
Maggie?
Yes, aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. We have a new director of adult education.
Outstanding, outstanding. And in terms of updates on RIFs at the cooperative middle school, I would ask the chair to reserve that for our non-public conversation.
Certainly. And David, do we have any resignations since our last meeting?
We did receive one resignation. Thank you for that reminder. It's been a little while since we've chatted about it. We are very sad to see Rosalind Moriarty leave our school district. She'll be the new director of special education in the York School District in York, Maine, where she resides and where she has longed to be by the beach, assisting students as passionately as she's been doing for us here at the high school in the cooperative school district and we'll wish her well.
And please do so on behalf of the board, if you would, David. Thank you.
I most certainly will.
All right. We'll move to our principals' reports and we're going to begin with Mr. Monahan this evening. Hi, Mike.
Good evening. Well, to start by, like I always do, thanking all of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our guidance counselors, administrators for all the hard work they're doing and the students because they're working extremely hard and the families under really tough circumstances, so that continues. I guess this would be the time to speak a little bit about graduation. Dr. Ryan, yes?
I would say go for it, sir.
Okay. So and Dr. Ryan, please chime in as you feel needed here. You know, just to give a little bit of background, you know, when we landed on the proposal that we sent out last week, it was through a conversation about being able to give the seniors that whole class graduation. That was really something that was really, really important to them. And I know the group of class officers and student senate representatives that have been working with us sent something to the board and to Dr. Ryan in support of that idea. And they've gotten a lot of feedback from classmates that they really liked that idea. I know I've gotten some feedback from some other people that maybe it's not as important. But so that was kind of the driving force behind that in our conversations. You know, I've also gotten feedback from people saying, well, could we still do that and have seniors get, say, two guests or four guests? We could probably still socially distance. But when you start adding up those numbers of people who would be at this gathering, it starts getting up to like 1,200, 1,400, and 1,500. And when those numbers build, it becomes a challenge for the social distancing and the logistics of that. And I think part of the feedback we got from our health partners was by keeping our numbers low, we might have an opportunity to have something like a real physical graduation. Am I summarizing that about right, Dr. Ryan?
Yes, you're correct. In the meeting that we had, we were originally talking about it with, we had director of security with facilities director as well as our consulting physician. And the safety factors that we have to abide by, we're prohibiting that large number, even though the stadium holds that number. And it isn't as much during the ceremony that there was heartache. It was more of the entering and leaving the facility with either two or four parents per student. And then there was some consternation relative to the number of supporters for each student because some families, there are multiple supporters who would want to be present. And then that conversation of, well, who can come and who can't, really started to take over some of that conversation. So Mike alluded to the lower the number, the larger the frequency of the event is probably the best way to go. And that was the, that was the advice that we received from our partners.
So I just wanted to give that kind of background as to how we landed on that proposal that's out there. And I know it caused some consternation for people. So, and we took a lot of feedback from folks. And in that, in giving that feedback, something that we've come up with is the idea of a graduation in phased groups. So we would still be outside with our traditional Exeter High School setup stage and all that. And what we would do is have groups of about 80 students participate over the course of a day. And this would allow for four guests to come and see the commencement, you know, and the students would be obviously appropriately socially distanced. Have the, have the students and their families drive together, hopefully maybe in one car, maybe two max. I understand there's logistics with that, so that would keep the number of cars down. We'd stage the people in the parking lot to wait, get the kids lined up, be able to get the parents into the stadium to be able to see it and then bring the kids in and do that in a series of, as I said, about 80 students per. Obviously, those people would get to see the delivery of the diploma jackets. We'd videotape it, we'd livestream it live so people could see it. We'd videotape it and then we'd also tape the traditional speeches and we would put that all together so the students at the end would have that full ceremony for them to look at. So we think this is the way, this proposal allows, you know, parents to see it and the students to experience a physical graduation. Again, traditional setup, walking across the stage and receiving their diploma jacket and then maintaining the appropriate social distancing. One group would be able to leave, we could stage the next group in another parking lot and kind of keep them moving through in that form of fashion. And I think we want to try to do this, probably not, wouldn't happen on that June 5th, 6th window. I've talked to Dr. Ryan. I think maybe pushing it back a week would help us with the logistics. So this, we're looking at a June 13th event. Schedule it starting, you know, sometime in the morning, you know, around nine o'clock and do, say, 45-minute windows, 30, 45-minute windows to get this accomplished. So again, it gives the kids a physical graduation and that's really important to them and is important to me. And I think it's also another thing that we should really try to do is get this done sooner rather than later. I know nine weeks ago when we started this, I spoke, you know, a lot about, well, we can wait as long as we need to later in the summer or longer. Having lived this for nine weeks, I don't think it's in anybody's, you know, mental health to keep kicking the can down the road, if you will. I think it's important that the kids get some closure and do it within the traditional graduation window and waiting, you know, for later on in the summer. I mean, realistically, things aren't going to be much better. And I think this is what the kids want this closure as well. So we feel like this is a good alternative proposal. So we kind of have a proposal that allows the class to be together without spectators and a proposal that allows obviously for a guest to see it. And we videotaped the whole thing anyway and still gives them the physical graduation. So that's kind of the two things we planned it on.
I also want to add with Mr. Monahan's discussion about holding off in the summer, that initial thought was before we really understood a lot of the research that's coming from countries now that are reopening. And if you're reading through, you're seeing that there are second waves and spikes occurring, which is natural to expect. Talking with Dr. Johnson, she and her partners at Core Physicians as well as Exeter Hospital are forecasting that based on social behavior and just because of who we are, given that the summertime tends to be a bit more of a free and easy time, the nicer weather, where more people are going to be outside, and the upcoming holidays of Memorial Day weekend and July 4th, that those social distancing guidelines most likely are going to be interpreted differently by people on an individual basis. She sees it now where when you walk into a crowded area, whether you go into a store or a gas station or somewhere, that it's probably 50/50 with those wearing masks and those not, where before it might have been a little bit higher. The stay-at-home order issued from the governor that's been relaxed a little bit and what he's calling, whatever, every governor is calling a reopening plan, is sending the signal to people erroneously that we're over the hump, we're on the mend and we can start to relax a little bit. And it's actually, it needs to be treated differently than that and the opposite of no, we need to remain as strict and as prudent as we've been to get to this point and so that there isn't a flash-up. But that doesn't seem to be what social behavior is predicting. So this window of opportunity that we have, given that the Seacoast area, or more specifically, SAU 16, if you look at the case count per town and the fact that we right now, at least from my last phone call, didn't have any hospitalized cases of COVID-19. The Seacoast region has done a nice job of doing what they were supposed to do. And so we want to kind of capitalize on that opportunity. I think if we wait too long, that we may not have that opportunity because that window will close based on the second wave or some more strict stay-at-home orders toward the end of the summer, at which point a number of our students are either moving back or off to campus to go to college or are otherwise engaged where we wouldn't be able to do something. And we've thrown out Thanksgiving as an opportunity which still exists. So that's some of the thinking that went into why we thought still trying to stay within either the June 5th or a week later timelines because of the window of opportunity. It certainly isn't to put it in the rearview mirror. It's definitely to ensure that we're protecting the health and safety of everybody involved while preserving the tradition that the students have said they want to have and that we're committed to giving them. So I just want to make sure that we understood that as well.
Thank you, David. I just, I saw some questions that come across the screen and, but I did want to, in fairness to the folks asking them, I believe one of the questions dealt with whether or not the, having the 80 graduates doing it in shifts. I believe you said, Mike, that the parents would be, their guests would be part of that. Am I correct on that?
Right, that's part of the, yeah, so they would have four guests. And they, and they saw the other one, they, we would maintain the social distancing parameters with those groups of 80 as well, so they'd be separated by six feet as well.
Thank you. And I believe, I believe a couple of board members had questions. Kathy had one and then Maggie, Kathy?
Yes. So my question is, what do the students want? Let's go back to, it's their graduation, which do they prefer? I'm a parent of a graduating senior. I would like to be there, but my preference really doesn't matter to me. It's what the kids want. I think that's really what we need to focus and I'd like to know if we have results of the survey.
So we were bringing these options to the board this evening and that survey is going out tomorrow. The seniors are getting a survey separate from the parents. The initial survey that we had sent out didn't differentiate from between who was voting no or yes. It told us the number of students and the number of parents who were responding, but it didn't identify when you put it through without having to manually calculate. And so what we wanted to do is be able to present using the feedback that we've received. And Mike has worked with Mr. Kitten as well as the senior class officers and a few other members of the senior class, that they certainly have a preference. And we want to ensure that we hear from all 411 graduates before any decisions are being made. So we just wanted to bring this information to the board this evening to give you some of the thoughts that have gone into calculating and trying to build these proposals. And, you know, Mr. Monahan, Mr. Kitten and the students have done a pretty good job of spending a lot of time on this. And so we do want to gather that information, Kathy.
So do you want a response, a vote on this tonight, even though we don't have their responses?
No, we don't. We're not asking for.
We don't, we're not. Okay, that's what I would say.
We were merely informing the board of the next steps and moving forward with putting some other proposals out there.
Okay.
And in the event that the board was adamant and, oh gosh, no, we wouldn't support that even if, you know, everybody wanted it, we just wanted to provide that information before we send that out tomorrow. So we would come back with all of that information. We would request from the chair a special meeting in order to hear final decisions on graduation ceremony.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Rather, Maggie, I'm sorry.
Kathy just asked my question. I was trying to figure out what the ask was of us tonight. So then I'll just, I'll just follow up with another question. So I'm just curious, the, if you do the 80 and the 80, isn't there a likelihood that kids will not be able to graduate with their friends? I mean, I don't know how you're going to figure out which 80, but I was just throwing that out there, that that could be challenging, but I don't expect an answer on it. I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, there certainly is.
I'm sorry, what?
There is absolutely a chance that, you know, because we thought of alphabetical would be the most logistical way to do it. But I don't, I don't think any plan that we're, that we're going to come up with is going to please anyone. Unless we're going to make COVID-19 go away.
But David, wasn't the two options, unless I heard it wrong, is doing 80 and 80 and 80 versus doing just the kids and no guests?
That's correct. Those are the two options that we're proposing.
And no guests, it would be all the kids, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Just clarifying.
I believe Paul has a question.
And then Helen, I have a comment as well.
Absolutely.
In terms of selecting a date for the graduation ceremony in whatever form it ultimately will take, I know that students who are going to the military often end up having to leave for boot camp or basic training very shortly after graduation. Do we have a sense of what those dates are? Do we have a sense of what those dates are that those students may need to leave by and, and, you know, make every effort we can to accommodate them, um, to make sure they can take part as well?
I don't. Maybe Mr. Monahan does.
I don't know what those dates are, but that's why, you know, I propose we would get it done no later than, you know, that June 13th. Again, that's in the normal window of, of graduations and I would think that would satisfy that.
Thank you. Travis?
Thank you, Helen. And, and Paul, maybe just to, to give some clarity to a, a friend of ours, their son, I believe is attending West Point and needs to depart to report June 28th, I think was the date that I was told when he and I exchanged a few texts, um, last week. So Helen, my, my only comment, um, and, and I'm glad that we have so many people that have joined us this evening to hear some of the conversation. There are no good options. I mean, we all know that. And we know that the Dr. Ryan and the administrative team is doing the very best they can to come up with something that works for the students first and foremost. I know that the survey that went out last week, I, I quite frankly was a little disappointed in some of the response to that. It was a survey soliciting your input. And while 99% of that input that, that we saw, uh, and a lot of it via social media was very respectful, um, sharing their opinions, their thoughts. A, a lot of them were, were good personal friends of mine as well. And I have a senior, Kathy has a senior, Dr. Ryan has a senior in another district. So we're certainly as close to this as everybody. But I want to take a moment to step up for Mike Monahan, for Mark Kitten, uh, for Dr. Ryan. There were certain comments where this was a cop out or we were failing our students, things of that nature. And quite frankly, not only is that idiotic to say something like that, uh, but it's insulting to Mike, to Mark, to Dr. Ryan, who are dedicating hundreds of hours to these kids over the years to try to make this work. So, um, you know, any other surveys that come out, we're soliciting your input. We would love to hear your respectful thoughts and ideas, uh, but that's certainly uncalled for. And then I just want to make sure to point that out, uh, to, to support Mike and Mark and, and Dr. Ryan and everybody that's working so hard to make something happen and work for our students, which is really where the priority should be. So I just think it's important to call that out and, and Mike, Mark, Dr. Ryan, thank you for all the effort you're putting into making something happen for our kids, which is where the priority should be.
Thank you, Travis. I, I'd like to echo that as well because I, as David pointed out, there is no right way to do this. No matter what you decide to do, it's going to, um, it's not going to make everybody happy. It, it's a, it's a tragic situation that we're dealing with. My own grandson was supposed to graduate last weekend from college. He could not have a ceremony. Uh, I don't think there's many of us that this has not touched. And I, I applaud your comments, Travis, in that they're trying to do the very best that they can. And I, I believe that, uh, no matter what decision is made here, it's going to be done in the best interest of the kids and what works best for, for everybody. So I, I don't envy you having to make those decisions, believe me, but I, and, but I do appreciate everything that you're doing. I believe Melissa has a question.
Thank you, Helen. First of all, I did want to, um, echo what Travis said regarding Mike and David. I've heard since mid-March that no matter what, Mike has been committed to a live and in-person graduation. And I just want to say how beautiful it is that you're so vested in these children. And David, I know that you've supported him completely in what his thoughts were, and I just want to say that that's huge. So kudos to both of you. I just wanted to share and echo what's already been said, but much of the feedback that I've received and granted it, the sampling is my tab. So it's not widespread in the SU, but from what I've heard is that people, they just, they're looking for the decision now. They want to just rip the Band-Aid off. We know there's no good solution. They just want to make the decision and move on as soon as possible. It's a live and in person, um, preferably with parents. So I have a question for you. I heard, I heard you mentioned that our concern is at the beginning and at the end, that people may kind of forget and mingle together. My question to you is, months ago, David, I know you had thrown out their suggestion of, let's say, a different venue, like UNH, and I'm just curious, even if, let's say, we required masks on parents or something. And I know Mike, um, which I think is admirable, admirable, you had mentioned, no, these kids need to do it on EHS soil, which I don't disagree, but I'm just curious. I know, David, you had thrown out a different venue. If we had a larger venue, I'd consider more people?
It's, you know, that's a hard question to answer, Melissa. It's, um, again, the, the, the organization of the before and the after is the real hard part. And, um, you know, sitting down, if we could just drop people into their seats from above and then extract them, we could do it in our stadium. It with a different setup, you know, with the, the stage in the, in the end zone and using both of the grandstands and having the students on the, on the field. But the, it, and, and, you know, I'm not a medical professional. I don't play one on TV. I don't claim to be one, although I've read a lot of the research that comes out about it since the middle of February. Our, our, our health partners are skittish about even supporting something like this, that, you know, even the, the broken up model. They, they wanted to hear about specific security protocols that we had. Where are we parking people? Does everybody have to arrive together? What happens if, with, when we were talking about just the 411 students? All the students who drive, we were going to park them in one area and those students who don't would have to get dropped off over at the Tuck and be socially distanced on buses and the buses were going to shuttle them over and then return them the same way. I mean, there's so much planning that goes into the before and the after. The commencement part is the easy part. So the size of the venue, it, for our medical folks, it doesn't matter. It, it's all of the, the social behaviors that exist. And when you put, I mean, we're going to struggle with just our, our 18, 19 year old students who haven't seen each other for three months, even if there are only 80 of them, trying to keep them to follow social distancing. But Mike has stood by every single member of this senior class and says if this, if there was a class that would be able to pull this off, this is the one. He has said nothing but positive about this class, which is why I buy into it and why I believe into it and why I've committed to it. Had he said something other than that, we wouldn't even be having this conversation.
Thank you, David.
Sure.
Other, other board members have questions?
Helen, Dave Slifka had a question.
I did see one question came across the screen that I was going to ask as well. I believe it may be from a parent. What if we have inclement weather?
We'd have it the next day.
Thank you.
Based on the forecast, uh, if we were to hold this on the 13th of June, the 12th is calling for rain, the 13th and the 14th, beautiful, mid to high 70s, clear as a bell.
Great.
What about June 5th? What's the weather report?
Helen, Dave Slifka, Dave Slifka had a question, Helen.
Thank you, Dave. Go ahead.
Well, Melissa hit the first question. I thought about a different venue, a larger venue, but we addressed that. The second part is, um, with the two options. Is it coming back to us after we, we reviewed the survey? Is the board making the decision at that point or are we going by what the survey says? Either way, how, how's that all going to iron out before the deadline of obviously June 13th?
We're, we're, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, we're both in agreement that we're keenly interested in what our students have to say first and foremost. But we also have to understand that given, um, the significance of the event and the emotion that's around it, we also have to consider where our parents are. So we're going to look at our surveys when they come back and we're going to come back to the board with a recommendation. And then the board is going to help us make a decision. That decision could be, yeah, we're not satisfied with this yet. We need to find something else.
Thank you, David. Other questions?
Helen, I don't see any of the other board members raising their hands for anything else.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything else for us this evening? That was certainly all encompassing, but if, if you have anything else to report for us?
No, um, but I would also just say appreciate the, the kind words, but also too, I've gotten a lot of, um, you know, feedback from folks with ideas that, that have been, you know, very constructive and I appreciate that. So I, I just wanted to say that as well to everybody. So I thank, I thank everybody for that.
Thank you, sir. You have no easy task here. Thanks, Mike.
Helen, Melissa's raising her hand again as well.
Okay, Melissa?
Hi, Helen. I'm sorry. Um, and, um, David and, um, and Mike, I'm totally putting you on the spot, just, just in general ballpark, just because I know a lot of parents timed it, um, tuned in. Do we have like a kind of generic timetable of when we're thinking, we're going to get the survey, we hope for results and then we hope for a decision? I think they're just, I think they just want to know when they'll have a decision. So I'm sorry for putting you on the spot. I'm just wondering if you had something you'd been kind of tossing around in your mind.
Well, the survey's going home tomorrow, Mike, right? We'll craft that.
Put it together and get it out.
Tomorrow, they'll go home to, yeah, families and seniors. And then, um, you know, as soon as we're getting, I mean, we only had about 50% return. No, I take that back. Yeah, we had, do we have about half?
About half.
Half return on the last, we'd be looking for a greater sample because it'd be more representative. So it'll be more telling too, because if we can get the majority of our senior class to respond, and, and then the majority of our parents to respond and getting a greater percentage of that 50%, and that happens over a couple of days, we could be back here the beginning of next week with a recommendation and a decision.
That's one.
So that would be that Tuesday. Is that what, uh? Yeah, it'd be Tuesday, the 20 something, whatever Tuesday is.
24?
Six.
26?
All the days run together, so whatever, whatever.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further questions, I think I'm going to move it along. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, just, I, one last thing too. I just want to, uh, before we move on to a different topic relative to this, you know, Sawyer Rogers has done a tremendous amount of work as well. So I just want to thank him for his efforts trying to solicit that feedback. I think it's important to publicly recognize him for what he's trying to do. He's been put in a tough spot.
Yeah.
I, I agree. He sent me a lovely email this morning and, uh, wanted to let the board know, as you know, he, we were asking him throughout the course of the year, what his post-graduation plans were. He is going to UNH, so I told him I would let you folks know that. It's their gain and our loss. So good luck to, to Sawyer.
They have no idea what they're in for. He's going to take over the campus.
Absolutely. And we thank him too for being such a wonderful representative of the high school on our board. Great job. All right then, uh, let's move on, if, if it's all right with everyone, for Patty to present her report on CMS. Patty?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I want to start by just acknowledging the teachers and the paraprofessionals, our school counselors for continuing to, um, really engage our kids in remote learning and, um, continuing with their spirit and creativity and, um, you know, bringing learning to life. And I appreciate all that they're doing for our kids and families. Secondly, I just wanted to share that, um, our iReady trainings for both our new users, for teachers, specifically English Language Arts and Mathematics teachers. They've had their two trainings under their belt, so to speak. And our practicing users, users have also had their two trainings and they have two more on the next two Fridays in May. And we look to then start developing rosters for our new users so they can play with it even more and continuing that training in the fall. I want to, uh, acknowledge a couple of people for our, if you've been watching our Blue Hawk News broadcast, that was the, the, the creation of Reenie Carpenter, a sixth grade English Language Arts teacher with the help of Ellen Sargent, our tech coordinator, and Joe Kenny, our AV tech coordinator, AV tech. And, uh, this club was started, the idea was Reenie's and started in the fall. And from March 13th on, the kids with Reenie wanted to continue to, um, report on the stories. And then they went right to broadcasting about remote learning. And I want to thank all of our teachers who have shared their stories or have been interviewed by the kids. To our, uh, actually our students, I don't know if you saw a couple of episodes, they had the privilege of sitting down virtually with Sean McDonald from WMUR and learning, uh, what it is to be a real life reporter. And, um, Sean was really sweet and they posted that video as well. So, um, just to see that, uh, life of CMS continues and that our students are a big part of that, of bringing that news, that the news doesn't stop. The stories don't stop and they're working so hard and I'm just so appreciative of Reenie, Ellen, um, and Joe to keep that going. And then lastly, our CMS project, uh, you know, I'm allowed to be in the building one day a week. So I was, my second visit was last Friday I was there. So I've decided to take pictures every time I'm there and then I share that with the staff. So I can, um, kind of bring the staff with me along this journey of how our building is transforming right before our eyes. And I'm sharing it with the parents too. So in my letter on the Fridays that I send out, I shared a couple of pictures with, um, our families as well, so they can feel like they're a part of this project too. And I think that's been really well received. That's about it.
Thank you, Patty. My husband and I have been walking over in the vineyards and I sneak peeks from the back of the vineyards to see what's going on. It looks amazing.
It does. Yeah, it's crazy.
Very good. Yes, it's exciting. Thank you. Are there questions for Mrs. Wands from the board?
Helen, not seeing any hands go up here.
Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I want to interject one, one comment. A, a couple of parents, I believe, uh, or a couple of students had, um, some questions came across the screen about whether they could, uh, speak relative to commencement. I would invite them, because of the nature of the board meeting tonight, to please feel free, if you have any comments or things that you want to share, to feel free to send those to the board if you'd like in an email and/or to, um, to Dr. Ryan and to, uh, Mr. Monahan. So we wouldn't have time to be able to do that this evening, but we want to hear any and all comments that you'd like to share with us. So please feel free to do so.
I would offer, Helen, if they want to send them directly to me, I'll ensure to disperse them to.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very, that's perfect. Thank you. Okay, we, uh, we have Sharon Wilson waiting in the wings here on SST.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Um, I have, um, just some really great things, I guess, to share. Today was a particularly wonderful day, but I will, um, kind of build up to that. A few weeks ago, a former graduate from Exeter, Katie Cashman, Catherine Cashman, she works at the Franklin Zoo now. And she did an exclusive behind the scenes Zoom with our animal and plant science students. And I had the opportunity to participate and she demon, she talked not just about her career path and how she took on this role of education at the zoo, but she explained some of the other career paths. She showed these incredible pictures. And she also demonstrated some animal handling. And all of the students asked a question and it was just a really fantastic experience. And it was the type of great thing that can happen with remote learning. And it all came together, not just because of our incredible teacher in Anne DeMarco, but because of her incredible legacy and her students. And, um, you know, an alum like Katie who, um, reached out to, you know, keeps in touch with her and wanted to share the experience. So it was really great and it was just an energizing time. And then today, we had some visitors at our SST staff meeting, including Dr. Ryan and Esther Asbell and the Chamber of Commerce. Because as I'm sure you know, um, they, this is around the time for the educator of the, um, year award from them. And I'm very happy that it went to an SST's teacher. I think I can announce it because it was announced in front of everybody, Jonathan Taberge, our welding teacher, who is just phenomenal. I said, you know, if you build it, they will come and that's who Jonathan is. Our kids actually come, we actually run an extra section of welding after school and the kids provide their own transportation and on the first day, everybody showed up. And if they miss one of those days, they, um, you know, try and come for another session. And for me, the coolest experience this year in regard And for me, the coolest experience this year in regards to welding hasn't been all the phenomenal things that they do because kids come to SST because of the hands-on experiences, kids stay because of our great teachers. And one day when we lost power, the power had been out for quite a while. And on that day, a Sanborn student came in and Sanborn didn't have school that day. And I said, oh, first of all, I, you know, Sanford didn't have school, you, you actually didn't have to be here. Said, yeah, I know, I just, is it okay? I said, well, my gosh, of course it's okay. Why aren't you here? I said, but you know, we don't have electricity. And he said, oh, I know that. But even without electricity, Mr. T is going to teach me something really useful and really exciting in welding.
That's great.
So even though there are so many fantastic teachers at SST, when it came time for that nomination, just all those things kind of came together for me. And it was, even though we couldn't do it in the normal environment that we would have with, you know, at the, at the function, there was also something really special about it happening at our faculty meeting in front of all of his colleagues and his peers. And it was a really nice boost, I think, for the faculty. I mean, all of the messages just came in like, oh my God, well deserved. That's so exciting. And it was just, it was really well timed. And last but not least, I have late-breaking news because tonight, one of the legs of the FFA state convention is going on virtually. And we have some gold star winner. We have a state star in Sam Pickering, a gold winner in Shannon O'Brien, a silver winnable winner in Isabel Nahir, and a bronze winner in Lauren Backdamer. So there'll be more going on tomorrow night, but late-breaking news, I just got the email, so. Nice little time for SST. So thank you all for all the support and all of the collegiality for helping me through this global pandemic in my first year as principal.
Thank you so much, Sharon. Will you please extend our congratulations to Jonathan as well as to the students in FFA? I think that's amazing. Great job.
I will, for sure.
And thank you too, as well as to Patty and to Mike for all of your hard work and effort. I know how difficult, I know how difficult it is to be a public school administrator under normal circumstances, let alone in the midst of remote learning. So thank you to all of you. Does anyone have a question or comment for Sharon?
Helen, I just wanted to throw out there that Jen Wheeler is on the call. She's, you know, is heading up the Exeter Chamber of Commerce. And we just couldn't thank her enough for, again, being able to be there today and awarding Jonathan with his award. Somehow we'll get it to him, but for all the work that she does and the partnership that we have through the SAU and Chamber. So I know she's here listening for Emma, but also to support Sharon. Thanks, Jen. And I know the board's very appreciative.
And she, and if I can just say, she has been a phenomenal support since last year, even before I took on the job. We had mentioned, I have, could not say enough wonderful things about Jen and about her daughter, Emma, and what they mean to SST.
Thanks, Sharon. Travis, I believe you, you had something you wanted to add?
I did. And Sharon, thank you very much for that. And, but it slipped my mind at the time, but more so after Patty's report. So I actually had received an email from an eighth-grade student who was working on what she called her, quote-unquote, "passion project" with Mr. McCumber. And I just want to thank Dr. Ryan, Richard Wendell, and Rusty, her passion project that she's exploring is solar power at CMS. And given everything that's going on and the thousands of things that they're dealing with on a daily basis, those three took the time to help facilitate some conversations with this young lady and help her work with what she needed to do. So thank you to them. And it's a, it's a great idea, Patty. She was doing a really great job. And it was nice to work with her and Mr. McCumber on that.
And Travis, wonderful. Any other questions?
No other hands going up that I can see, Helen.
Thank you so much, Travis. All right then, we'll move along to the financial report and we're going to turn it over to Molly, Molly O'Keefe.
Hey. So last month when we met, the financial pack had a two-point, sorry, 1.287 remaining balance. And now the financial pack that you received this week has a 1.65 million remaining balance. And the reason why that went up is we had things that we were able to unencumber that are no longer needed in the remote learning environment in regards to special ed and regular, and regular education. Athletics went up, and that's because at the time we met last, last time, it hadn't, we hadn't canceled all sports yet because we weren't fully remote yet all semester. So, or at least when the financial was run. So that has relieved some expense. We did add the asbestos abatement, which is happening over at the Tuck Learning Campus. And then we had a big relief of expense in the student transportation because last time, if you remember, we talked about the first student. But since then, we've also applied the discounts for our special education transportation, as well as all the buses used for athletics. We unencumbered all of that. So your packet that you got in your board pack has a remaining expense of 1.65 million dollars. However, on the revenue side, we actually have revenue a lot higher than expected. Access revenue is $859,000. And then items that were accrued into last year's expenses, which show up in this year's expenses, which we essentially moved back, is almost, is $459,000. So with that all said, we're actually looking at a total fund projected balance of 2.9 million at the end of the year. Now, that Gloria wants me to make sure I say is of today because things can change. She's very nervous about things changing our accountant. But she felt very confident in that number. So I also pulled the history as to what we've given back for the last, actually, 10 years just to see, compare, to see if we want to return the full 2.9 or if there's certain things that we want to move forward from what's budgeted for next year, say retirements or maintenance projects, so that if we do have to buy tons of masks or thermometers or what have it, that it frees up space in the budget. So just wanted to get those conversations started to see what direction we want to take.
Thanks, Molly. I'll open that up for discussion with regard to the unassigned fund balance. Travis, if you could keep an eye out for whoever would like to speak on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Helen, I see Kim and then Bob, and then I've got a thought as well, but Kim?
Yeah, thanks, Travis. Molly, does that incorporate the bond payment that we have coming up?
Bond payments are in next year's budget.
Next, okay.
So next year's in July.
Okay, so that's next, all right. That's what I, that's what I thought. And then secondly, the, I know we said we're on track, as far as you know, with the town assessment payments coming in, but just to clarify, like, the cash position, we don't necessarily have all that cash in hand because the school year, the budget ends at the end of June and those payments are still coming in as far as revenue, right?
Yep. Yeah, so we get the payments monthly. So the cash.
That happens sometimes. One of her kids bites into the wire or she just freezes up sometimes. She'll be back.
I thought it was me again.
I just wanted to make the point that, that we have that unassigned fund balance, but we're moving, we're operating in a dynamic situation where we have six towns who are contributing to the revenue. And depending on the situation in those towns, a lot could, could change between now and the end of the year, budgetarily.
Right. Yeah, sorry, I'm back. Yes, David was right. Sometimes my kids bite the wires. Sorry, I, I think I missed part of your question, Kim.
No, no, I just was saying, we were clarifying that while there's quite a significant unassigned fund balance, we have shifts in terms of when the revenue is coming in the door because of the global pandemic happening and the trickle-down from towns and their revenue being put on hold depending on taxpayer situations. So we're sort of being updates regularly in terms of the financials.
Right, yeah. So it's still, we, we haven't had any towns slip yet. The concerns still remain the same, but where we don't have to pay things like the athletic buses or certain things like that, it is saving a little bit of cash there for us to spend in other areas.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Kim. Other questions?
Bob, did you have your hand up by thought?
Yes.
I see Melissa raising her hand as well.
Yeah, just a quick question. I do feel that before we can start again in the fall, however we start, we're going to need a COVID-19 amount of money to deal with buying something that we've never bought before for schools. And all the schools are going to need it, whether it's the monitors or, or, you know, PPT, whatever, whatever it is. It's going to be, so that we're going to have to have a fund somewhere that we can call upon so that we can move ahead.
Yeah, I definitely agree that it's, we're going to have to spend some amount of money. I don't know how much because I don't know what the virus will look like. But we could also think about moving some things that were slated for next year into the current year to free up that space. Because ultimately, you can't overspend your bottom line. But if we move accelerated things forward, it could free up a little bit of that space.
Thank you.
Melissa, I think you had your hand up. And then Mr. Bauer, Paul, you have yours as well.
I did. I just had a question and a comment. And Molly, I just wanted to make sure that I understand. So the 1.6 million that we received in our packet, that just includes expenses? And the 2.9 million that you were sharing is what includes revenue as well?
Correct. Yep. So historically, we always just provide the expense side in your board packs. And then we really scrub the revenue up until the last minute before the meeting to determine our projected revenue. And so we're seeing revenue higher in various areas. It's not just one particular area. So, and then also there's some expenses that show up this year because it was dumb this year. So it shows up in our expense report, but we approved it back to last year. And so that was the 459,000.
Thank you. And then the other, a comment, and correct me if I'm wrong. I just want to share it with everyone because I don't know, you know, who has heard it, who hasn't. But my understanding is if we do go back to school, we're going to need PPE gear for custodial and cafeteria staff. We talked about the masks per, you know, masks for the students, two per day. And it sounds to me like we could be looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not, we could hit a million or something for this. Was it Esther that said she looked up on, was it walmart.com, $59.99 per box of 100 kid masks? And when she did the math, just for Exeter, it was $225,000 for the year. So I just want to put that in perspective so everyone has an idea. And if I have that number off, please go ahead and correct me. And Molly, by the way, you're doing awesome. I just want you to know that. At the end of your first year, you're doing great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, I just, I did talk to the auditors too because I wanted clarification about the PPE and the masks because typically the rule of thumb is you should buy things in the year that you're going to use it. So like, for example, we wouldn't pre-buy textbooks that are going to be used next year. That would go in next year's budget. But this is so unique. And there could be a run on masks in the fall when we need to buy them. And so he has said, the auditor actually said, you know, if you want to buy them now or if that's one of the things we want to buy now in the current year's budget, he was okay with that because it probably does make more sense to buy in bulk, or it definitely makes more sense to buy in bulk. And some people are going to need them over the summer, if not right now as well, as we start to gradually go into the buildup.
So really dumb, dumb question, okay? But let's just say hypothetically speaking, because I don't disagree that we shouldn't, I mean, it's obviously a board decision. But let's say we pre-buy because we have this money and you're right, like, we could absolutely have a shortage on this or toilet paper. Let's say that we pre-buy and then we don't utilize many of the masks. Is there, are we just, is there a place for us to, do you know what I mean? For us to sell these masks later? Or do you all think that we're just going to be stuck with hundreds of thousands of dollars of masks? And I'm just throwing it out there because I'm not on any of the, not on any of the healthcare committees out there.
I don't know anything about the surgical market and the, so, but if we buy them, we have to pay for them. So even if you, even if you bought them all, you still have to pay for them and you can't overspend your bottom line. So if you sell them, it would be revenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Paul, I think, yeah, Paul. And then Kathy, I see your hand there as well. So Helen, it's Paul and then Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, given the uncertain situation we find ourselves in, both regard to the anticipated, well, the unanticipated costs that we're going to have to face, as Melissa and Bob were talking about. And the fact that we, you know, have some concern about whether the towns are going to be able to raise the tax revenue that they have voted to send to us. I would definitely be reluctant to return the unencumbered balance to the towns until we have more, at least until we have more clarity on that and understand, you know, what our funding situation is going to look like. Because it's, you know, imperative that we're able to cover our budget and make sure that whatever form education is taking come the end of August, we're able to educate our students in, in the way that they need to be educated.
Yeah, and just for your reference, I did pull the last few years as to what we gave back. So last year, we gave back 1.5 million. The year before that, it was 3.07 million. And the year before that was 3.38 million. And then also, just so you know, when we presented in the deliberative session, we had to calculate the tax impact, we had to assume how much we're going to give back. And at the time, as before any of this happened, we put in $750,000. So now we're at 2.9 million, just for a comparison aspect.
Good information to have. Thank you, Molly.
And so what I did pull together was things that if we want to consider not giving back the full 2.9, but giving back something less if we wanted to escalate things or accelerate things. The auditors were okay. We do have the retirement slated for next fiscal year in July for our large number of folks that are retiring to move that into this year if we wanted to because essentially they are retiring this year. But I also asked Rusty to pull together items that he felt were needs for next year, not wants, but needs. And so Rusty and I put together a list with some values earlier today, if you want Rusty to talk to any of those.
Thank you. I believe Kathy had a question?
Yes. So my question, getting back to the masks, are we going to make it a standard that we require kids to wear masks when they come back to school? Is that something that we as a board should talk about?
That's going to come out of the committees for recommendation. We're not sure where we are on that. Plus, CDC guidelines could be changed between now and the start of school. So I think that's still a conversation that's ongoing, not just with us, but within the medical community across the country. Right now, anybody who's planning to go back to school has within their plan, everybody wears masks. That's a standard protocol today. So we're not sure where that's going to be in three months. But if we were to go back to school tomorrow, we'd be subscribing to everyone wears a mask.
I just can't imagine having kindergartners and first graders and really expect them that they're going to keep them on.
Right.
That, that to me is going a little bit over the top.
I know.
I just don't, I can't, I can't even, yeah. I can't, after working with them and being in the school with them, it's hard enough to get them to put a hat on, never mind a mask.
Or it's not touching them, right?
Or to take it off, yeah. Like, I just, just crazy. But, okay. We'll get to that, that place when we have to.
Yeah, I have a kindergartner. It's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, sure. I remember those days.
Travis has been patiently waiting. Travis, would you like to comment on this?
No, I'm, I'm fine, Helen. Molly actually hit on, on some of the, the items. She and I, I asked her for some information as some of my work with one of the task forces and talking about what we can do with the unassigned fund balance, whether, you know, from an audit perspective. And then, you know, some of the options that may be available to us. And Molly outlined some of those in terms of, you know, paying some of the retirement expenses that are budgeted for next year, but are due this year, so we have that money. So if we do something like that, that would free up, you know, significant dollars in next year's budget to use wherever we, we may need to use them. I would emphasize, and certainly Molly and Dr. Ryan know better than I do, but at our next meeting, or probably no later, I mean, we need to, I think, my opinion, make some decisions fairly quickly on what we're going to do because that money needs to be allocated or invoiced or something prior to June 30th if we're going to have any ability to do that. So we need to, you know, come to some decisions fairly quickly as a board. And if it's prepaying, and I guess that question maybe for Dr. Campbell, if it's prepaying, or not prepaying, if it's paying early, some of those retirement expenses that we, we know are coming effective July 1, do we need to consult with the associations at all? I can't imagine they would complain about getting their money two days earlier, July, you know, June 30 versus July 1. But I don't know if we need to ask those questions. But we as a board need to make some decisions fairly quickly. And I don't know if that means another meeting or something, Helen, that's certainly your prerogative, but. But this is time sensitive, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
Thanks, Travis. I believe our next full board meeting is scheduled for June 19, if I remember correctly on the calendar. Perhaps what we could do, if Molly could get some figures together for us and, you know, we have so many other things that are coming up that we're not unsure of right now. Perhaps if we do call a special board meeting to discuss the commencement issue, then June 16, Kim's telling me, thanks, thanks, Kim. If, if, if we need to make that decision before June 16, perhaps we could have that conversation the same night that we discussed the commencement options, if you would feel more comfortable making that decision earlier. From my perspective, I would like to see some of that money clearly returned to the towns. At the same time, I want to make sure that we're prepared for any, as many possibilities as possible with regard to the, the safety of our youngsters and our faculty and purchasing whatever is necessary for them. But perhaps if we have a few more weeks to get some more information, that will make it a little clearer for us to make those decisions.
Sure. And then just as we finish this year out, we are being very stringent on any purchasing. Any district that wants to buy anything has to go through me.
Thank you. Keep an eye on it, kiddo.
I am.
No soup for you.
Melissa's raising her hand as well, Helen.
Good job. Any, any other comments or questions relative to the fund balance?
Helen, Melissa has one.
Okay, Melissa?
This, I know you've all already thought of this. I'm just like saying the obvious out loud. It's just one thing I struggle with. I get it, we don't have a choice. But we have to make a decision right away about the unreserved fund balance. But yet our four committees won't have their recommendations for us until the middle of July, which I'm glad they won't have decisions for us until later, simply because I feel like, I don't know, I live my life, you know, newscast to newscast these days, right? Everything changes so quickly. But I feel like it's going to be hard to make decisions about purchasing certain PPE when we don't even know if the committees are going to come back and say, you know what? We think maybe we'll do the remote learning for the older kids or something. Just, just food for thought.
No, it's a good point, Melissa. Thank you.
Melissa, I'm sorry, Helen, Dr. Ryan has his hand up as well. But and just to comment most to your point, which I agree 100% with, the things that I think we need to take a look at are things like that retirement money. It's not committing next year's dollars to something else that we may not have any idea about, but it's freeing up dollars for next year that we then at least have some flexibility. That was my only point because I agree completely with, with what you just said there. But Helen, Dr. Ryan had his hand up.
Yeah, no, I'm all set because Travis, you said exactly what, what I was thinking is, if let's say we had a half a million in retirement cost to pay next fiscal year, we could pay it this fiscal year, which frees up that million in the budget that in the event we need to purchase PPE, we'd be able to do it then.
Yeah.
So that, that's exactly what we were talking about.
Yeah, because either way, we have to pay the retirement money one way or the other from one of the two budgets. So if we wanted to free up the space, that could be an option, potentially an option if we wanted to do that. Because either way, we know what we have to pay and it's going to happen.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you. All right then. What I'd like to do is talk, just for a moment, it won't take us very long, about the appropriation of funds for the Wheelwright scholarships, Molly, if I may address that. As you know, we are giving again three scholarships this year. Bob, Paul is serving on the selection committee and they're going to be meeting in the next week or so, I believe, to make that selection. I'm sorry, Bob?
Next Tuesday, 10 o'clock.
Wonderful. Thank you for letting us know that. So we, we need though to formally appropriate that money. It's a total of $6,000 for three scholarships of $2,000 each. As you know, a four-year, a two-year, and a vocational, vocational school. So if, if we could have a motion on that from a board member, and I would think that maybe Bob would like to make that motion.
I would like to make that motion to move $6,000 into the Wheelwright scholarships to be given out this year.
Thank you. And we need a second on that?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
We all wait for somebody else and then we all jump in at the same time at the end.
I know, that's true. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion about it? None?
Not seeing any, Helen.
So we'll go down, we'll poll again. Travis?
Aye.
Thank you. Maggie? Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. All right then. So we will wait.
I'll let you know.
We'll await the, the names of those recipients and then notify Molly of that. Bob, if you could connect with me once that decision is made. Is that all that we need to do, Molly, on that this evening?
Yep, as long as we voted on it, then, yep.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, at this point in time, this is usually the time that I invite our administrators. If they would like to leave the meeting, please feel free to do so. I know you've been meeting out in Zoom meetings all day and every day. So feel free if you'd like to do that. If you'd like to stay, please feel free to join us as well. We're, we're moving, I just have one, one item for the chairs report and it's more of a follow-up from our joint chairs meeting that was held last week. And we were asked as chairs to just comment to our respective boards about perhaps protocol with regard to conversations that are going on during public meetings with regard to the administration. And the request that we had from the SAU administrators was that if we could, perhaps at times, there was maybe a lack of collaboration in terms of discussion in one of our joint, recent joint meetings. What they're asking for is for board members, if there's an issue that they have that they could talk privately in advance of a meeting with those respective administrators. And then if there's a need for additional conversation during the board meeting, fine. But what they're looking for is a sense more of collaboration when we're having those conversations as opposed to maybe a more adversarial view that, that they sensed in one of the meetings. So I share that with you at their request. And if anybody has any questions or comments about that, by all means, please feel free. I don't know if David would like to address that in addition to myself, but by all means, feel free to speak on this if you'd like to.
We were just hoping for, in the event that we receive a question from a board member, this is across the SAU, that it be presented in a way that we're able to provide solutions. Sometimes, at least since January, we've been asked questions that have been out of the blue and have kind of put us on the spot. And almost in one instance has been kind of a gotcha question. And what was ironic about it was that that particular question was from an individual that I had had a conversation with an hour and a half prior to the meeting about a completely different topic. So the opportunity to ask was there and we could have been able to reach the, the solution. And then in the public meeting, be able to talk through that solution and have that conversation. So I think it's more about, as we're expected as SAU administrators, to be upfront, transparent, providing as much communication and information to our board members. As an SAU administrator, we're hoping that we could have the same level of, of communication from our board members who have issues with either our performance or an issue that's come up, a question that they might have from constituents. Because our, our job is to serve and we want to be able to do that. But we want to be able to do it in a constructive way. And if we're going to be doing it in a public manner, we want it to be as professional and respectful as possible.
Thank you, David. Anybody else would like to comment or have any questions about that?
Helen, Melissa's got her hand up.
Yes, Melissa?
Melissa, you're still muted.
Sorry. My husband would love a mute button. I just have a question. It's actually, and I apologize, Helen, it's not directly related to that. Last night at the joint board meeting, we talked about the joint chairs, whether or not, and I'm in the same boat as you as a chair, whether or not we would continue to have the power through the COVID-19. And I know Tim suggested we bring it back to our boards. Is, I don't even, I didn't even understand how we were supposed to move forward with that. Is that something that we need to discuss tonight? And now there's, like, how, what's up with that?
There was no action on that last night. Travis, you recall, there was discussion, but I don't, I don't recall a vote. And I don't know where, where it was left, whether it was just to converse with your own board. I know Mr. Glitsky differed in the opinion that I offered relative to where the authority to disband that practice was. He felt it was within the individual boards. I felt that it was with the joint board. And so I don't think it, it took off anywhere from there.
Is it just assumed since we're meeting monthly that now the joint chairs won't have that authority? I heard what you said. You did know. I'm in the same boat. I'm just asking like that.
So I, I, I don't know. I had indicated that as long as the joint board was willing to meet monthly, that certainly we could, you know, hold, return to that level of direction with the entire joint board. But I know no action was taken, so I'm not certain what direction to take, what step to take now.
Right, Melissa, if I could just add to, and I agree with, with what you're saying, Dr. Ryan. And I mean, what I kind of took away from that is, is if, if an urgent matter comes up that, you know, related to COVID-19 that needs, needs, you know, Dr. Ryan needs some, some decision-making authority, the joint chairs still retain that until a vote is taken to change that. But given that this type of meeting has, is available and can work and is appropriate with, with the RSAs and everything else, it's sort of been set up so that we can do this. You know, if, if, just kind of the regular course of joint board business, we will at least die as chair of that until somebody else takes that reins. I will try to convene that group so that everybody participates in that discussion. I think that was what I took away that people wanted, unless it is an urgent need and Dr. Ryan will advise me of that. And then, you know, then, then we'll call the chairs to order to make a decision at that point. But, you know, the consensus was people did not want more meetings. But if they want to have a seat at the table, then they're going to have more meetings. That's, that's just the way it works, unfortunately. So I don't foresee and, and anything, you know, quote unquote, urgent happening that hasn't already happened. But if Dr. Ryan calls me and says we need to get the chairs together to make a decision on something, then as far as I'm concerned, that authority still resides with them until a vote of some kind is taken.
Okay.
Thank you. I lost you guys for a few minutes. My apologies. I panicked. My video, I've lost all of you. So we're back. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments relative to this?
I do not see any other hands, Helen.
Thanks, everybody. All right. Why don't we move on to our committee reports? And we embedded facilities into our board meeting tonight. And we're looking at building reports. I'm assuming that perhaps Rusty is on for this particular part of the meeting. Am I correct on that?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Rusty.
Hi.
Anything you'd like to report out to us on building reports?
Sure. Good evening to everybody. I'll start with the asbestos abatement. It's going better than we could have possibly imagined. They've got the second floor completely abated. It's been tested through our hygienist, our PF, the entire time for safety. It's been cleared. So now the tile company is in and has prepped it. The tile is ordered. They expect that to come in in about two weeks. And even though it's 44,000 square feet of tile, they are telling us they can do it in two weeks, which is pretty aggressive. So if that starts June 1st, we'll give them a month and that would still be impressive. So we're hoping by the end of June, that will be completed. They are on the first floor now. They're in the adult ed section. That's all underway and it's going very, very well. I do want to say that before we started that, we had our entire custodial staff. Everything had to be moved and it was a mountain that had to be moved. And we were continually told, we'll never do it in time. So we now have the Talbot Gym full, we have SST full, but they did it and we're very proud of that. We had the same condition at CMS to begin that renewal project. Again, lots and lots of things had to be moved as I'm sure some of the people here in this board realize. And again, they pulled that off, the men and women in the facilities did. And I've heard nothing but praise from the project managers and the Harvey Construction and from the abatement company. Just how spectacular was it? It got done, it got done in a timely fashion so that they could begin. And so again, we're very pleased with that. As far as the CMS renewal project, I will let Mr. Wendell speak to that. I can begin if you'd like. We do have a, we discussed it with Mr. Bauer in the past about a needs assessment here at the TUC. We can get into that if you'd like. It was something that, what will become of this building, what needs to be done to bring it up to code. There's lots of ADA requirements that are required to be looked into. There's heating mechanical, so I have reached out to two architectural firms, actually three. I only have received two bids. The third one was a no bid. So we have a one that we will probably choose, but I still need some guidance, some maybe from Molly. If you still want me to reach out and see if I can get a third one, I can. It's just at this point, I only have the two and the one that we would choose is very reputable. Mr. Wendell has used them in the past. We took them around the building. They explained what they would do. They'd bring in their team of engineers, structural engineers, electrical engineers, mechanical. They're concerned, of course, about the ADA requirements, which are woefully lacking in certain sections. We really need to address that if we're going forward. There's also a concern about the sprinkler is only at the moment in the basement level. They would like, of course, the entire building sprinkled, so they'd look into that. So the question is, are we up for to have this architectural firm come in and give us a needs assessment? We would certainly like to go forward with that, but we just need direction from the board.
Thank you, Rusty. Are there any questions from the board for Rusty on any of these items?
Helen, Paul has his hand up.
Paul, thank you.
I first had a statement and then a question. My statement, first of all, is Rusty, thank you. You and your team have been doing unfathomable amount of work during these last few months and doing it all while being mindful of keeping your staff safe. And I, I, I know that I speak for the board and I say I'm so appreciative of all that you and your team have been doing. So thank you sincerely for that.
Thank you, Paul.
The question that I had was with regards to the needs assessment at TUC. You know, what we had discussed is certainly we understand there, there's some significant needs in that building. And I think that what we need to have happen is to really get a, a sound understanding as a board of what those needs are, how, how they're prioritized, you know, what are, you know, absolute 1A essential needs? What, you know, leans more towards the wants than the needs category? And just kind of figure out what the prioritization is, what cost we're looking at. And then we need to have a discussion about the future of the TUC building. You know, what work it is that we need to do and whether we want to continue using the TUC building in the same capacity we've been using it in or if we're better served by considering other options. So that's kind of the discussion that I've envisioned happening. So I think that needs assessment is part of that. My question there, Rusty, is, and I apologize if you said this and I just missed it, but what are the costs associated with getting a needs assessment done now?
Okay. I can tell you what the low bid is, but I thought in respect to if we need a third bid, I don't know if that should be divulged now. If you're happy, it's okay with the two, I can be more than happy to tell you what it is. I just thought fairness to the third bidder, if that's required, I'm holding that.
Yes, I understand that that makes sense that we wouldn't want to divulge that yet from the process with the third bid. But I guess we, we, I, I don't know if we as a board would be comfortable, I'd want to hear from others, if we'd be comfortable greenlighting, getting that needs assessment until we could have an understanding of the cost. And I'd be curious what others would think about that.
Thanks Paul I my apologies if I keep going in and out on you I'm having some connection problems here. Any other comments relative to either Paul comment or to Rusty?
Yeah Helen I have a comment as well but Dr. Ryan politely has raised his hand and Molly's not muted and it looks like she's itching to say something too so I'm not sure.
I'm actually I'm actually fine my kids are really quiet I just.
We're taking advantage of the fact that they are quiet right now which is.
No it's never happened.
My question was Rusty's what's the timeline on a needs assessment is that something that we would need to decide on relatively soon? Or do you think it could wait till next month when we'd have an opportunity to talk it through facilities because there's a facilities and finance meeting scheduled before the June sixteen board meeting and we could have that conversation facilities as well?
Yeah I don't see any problem in waiting. I know I hear from the architectural firms apparently they're a little slow but I think we could safely wait and discuss it.
Great thank you Kathy?
Have we answered Rusty's question about whether or not he needs to go out for a third bidder or can we just go with the two? Well our policy. I don't think we have did we answer that?
Our our policy just requires three bids for items over ten thousand dollars unless there's an exemption by the superintendent is what the policy says.
Okay so then he does need to go out for a third bid is that what I'm hearing? Is unless the superintendent says two is enough I guess that's what I would like to know I think maybe Rusty might have wanted clarification on that maybe I'm wrong.
And he hasn't eaten me cookies so I can't override that policy yet he hasn't tried to win me over so we're gonna need that third.
Cookies that's what it takes? Not even coffee would go with it? Coffee they could have coffee with cookies okay all right just I was just confused because it didn't seem like we addressed his question and I wanted to make sure it was addressed okay thank you.
I will certainly pursue that they came back with a no bids a company we've used before. I'm sure I can persuade him to get back and give a bid I know they were just too busy at the time but came back with no response after several communications over the phone.
Okay thank you Rusty.
Helen Bob has his hand up.
Yes I'd like to I I would like to bring this to facilities I think it needs to be further discussed before any move is made.
So I'm not sure if Helen is frozen as well. But as vice chair I'll try to continue the conversation until we hear otherwise from Helen I'm not getting a response from her is anybody else? Not looking like it so thank you Bob and Paul to your question earlier I I would agree with your assessment and and I think that you was chair of that committee should facilitate some further discussion there. My just personal opinion is unless it's urgently needed I think next year is going to be a challenge regardless of of what's going on so I would be you know leery of of any significant expenditure unless it is urgent. And if we're talking bigger renovation of Tuck you know and and where it gets to the point of a warrant article I I think the community would be leery of of that type of expenditure right now after we were even managed to get CMS approved. I I think the appetite would be light for that type of bond again if it's a significant amount so Helen it looks like you're back with us. I just shared a a comment with with Paul so back to you Helen.
Thank you all right so at this point in time are there any further questions or concerns of either for Rusty or from Rusty?
The only thing I'd like to Mr. Wendell is here and I'm sure you'd like to hear from him regarding the CMS renewal.
Thank you. Okay Dick you're on.
Okay you're muted.
Good evening thank you very much for inviting me. The CMS renewal project is in full gear I'm going to back up a little bit and have a quick discussion discussion about maybe some things I've already made you aware of because it brings me forward a little bit simpler the tree work tree removal site rubbing and land clearing is now complete. That is anticipation of putting in new roadway for the new bus loop. The catch basins on site are now been placed for stormwater and all your stormwater piping is now also in place. Our geotech has been on site testing soils and and testing soil compactions all of our domestic water and sprinkle piping now has been relayed and placed in its new positions underground. The transformer pad is in place and ready to receive our new transformer which is on order. We're hoping that as soon as this Friday or maybe next Monday we will begin digging and and forming up for footings and pouring those footings so that part of the site work is moving along rapidly. Bidding has continued just some of the big ticket bidders acoustical tile came in at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars the electrical bid was around seven hundred and twenty one thousand. The demo contractor was at two hundred and fifteen thousand. Site work seven hundred and seventeen thousand millwork at two hundred and sixteen thousand and roofing at six hundred thousand each one of those bids meet or are just under our construction budget line items so I'm very pleased about that. Date we have no change orders although our third party reviews are just coming back. The third party reviews are something that the town of Stratum would ask us to do and go out and and use a a particular professional to do a review of the plans that the architects submitted one of those is from the state bar marshals office. That had that may trigger a change order they have asked that we look into additional exit exiting area from the back of the kitchen cafeteria and loading dock and then from the loading dock down to the ground so that in itself might trigger a change order but we haven't seen that yet. A little bit of a shout out to the town of Stratum. They I wrote them a letter about a month ago respectfully requesting that the select board waive the building for building permit fee. They graciously did waive a percentage of that fee so based on the amount of the construction that fee should have been forty seven thousand eight hundred and eighty six dollars. They have agreed to waive eleven thousand four hundred and eighty seven dollars of that fee. So are now our building construction fee will only be thirty six thousand seventeen dollars. So I'm very appreciative to the town of Stratum select board for that reduction in the in the building permit fee and also the town of Stratum code enforcement officer Shante Wolf the building inspector has been nothing but a joy if I can use that word to work with along this project he he has been you know outstanding. Inside the building temporary walls have been being installed in the area D also near the gymnasium inside the cafeteria wall in the kitchen storeroom have now all received temporary walls. These temporary walls will protect the students from the construction area so when the students return. Also these temporary walls basically are now your new outside walls because all of your brick veneer and all of your CMU which is your masonry concrete block has been removed in the rear of the building exposing the entire back of the CMS to to the outdoors it's 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 a fascinating and a quick project that you're seeing out at the CMS and 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 Harvey Construction has done a very good job moving this project forward quickly. The so in a nutshell basically outside of the rear of the building is now gone and what you'll see is large yellow temporary walls. A really big shout out I know I Rusty has praised his own staff and his own crew but I'm going to praise Rusty and his crew together. They have been a nothing but a huge help. His coordination of effort not only to help me but also the site superintendent has been nothing but admirable. He was able to move student furniture teachers furnishings physical education equipment and keep it all safeguarded at the same time. So I'm very I cannot say thank you enough to him. A quick shout out also to Patty Wans I I enjoyed my 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 last couple of meetings it gives me an opportunity to bring Patty around the building and she's she's a much better publicist and that's probably not the right word but you know she gets the pictures out for her staff is something that I probably fall on my face trying to do. But I appreciate her enthusiasm I do appreciate her being in the building at times. It's it's I guess it's also fun for me to show it off a little bit and and to have her there has been good plus I get a chance to ask her quick subtle questions about the renovation project that will help me help her staff when they come back so I I certainly want to say to Patty thank you and then going to the covid nineteen items and issues with with the site. Harvey Construction has done a very good job protecting the job site first first and foremost they have fencing protecting protecting the construction site they have signage about wearing their safety equipment but most noteworthy is every working employee on every morning shift must check in with the job superintendent or his assistant and they are giving a they they monitor their temperature they read them a screening questionnaire as to how they're feeling their health whether or not they have themselves the workers been traveling. So they are really keeping a tight lid in response to covid nineteen at this job site. A couple of weeks ago they we did happen to have one employee come in to work and and state that he wasn't really feeling well. They did send that particular worker home along with the two other employees that rode into work with him that day. They did require him to be tested and his test has came back negative so he does not have the covid nineteen but but at least Harvey Construction is staying on top of the safety at the site so I'm excited I know Paul Bauer is probably going to ask me how we're doing on the schedule. The schedule is on time we have always stated it's an eighteen month project which puts us out somewhere around November to December of twenty twenty one. I'm hoping that that schedule will move now that we do not have children in the building. But what I'm most excited about with this project right now is that without the 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 scheduled production hopefully will reduce the amount of student disruption when the students do come back. So I'm more worried and concerned about that part of it than I am with the end date although I'm seeing the end date maybe sneak up also so that's it from my my quick report for tonight.
Thanks Dick great job are there any questions? The board?
Mr. Bauer is the first one to go up quickly.
Oh he does it come on.
Thank you so first of all again Dick I want to say thank you sincerely for for all the hard work you're putting in to get this project underway earlier than anticipated amidst a global pandemic is is phenomenal. You're really doing fantastic work to get it underway and I'm excited about it. Appreciate you anticipating the question about the schedule. The other question that I did have was in terms of the subcontractors coming in. First of all very glad to hear that that so far they've all come in at or below the the budgeted costs. Where are we in that process and what I mean by that is you know how many subs do we have remaining to hire? Do we have you know fifty percent of them contracted for now more than that less than that? How far along are we in terms of getting all the subcontractors we need for the project?
Well where we have already hired probably two thirds of the contractors there's a few that are still out there like the flooring is one large one that I can think of and I think Harvey is in purposely stalling a little bit because they're still looking for better pricing. So I I would say we have about a third left because they're so far they those folks aren't really necessary yet in part of the project they'll be they'll be in the building later you know they won't be in the building for at least another year so I think they're just waiting to capitalize on better bidding.
Great thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks thanks Dick thanks Paul any other questions for Dick?
Not seeing any other hands Helen.
All right well I would like to add my kudos to both Rusty and to Dick for the amazing job they and their staffs are doing. Rusty this was your first formal report with us tonight you did a great job thank you so much. Both of you gentlemen are a blessing to have in our district and we thank you and if you could pass our thanks along to your maintenance crew Rusty as well please in terms of how pleased we are with all that you've been doing and we thank you so much.
Certainly will thank you.
Thank you thanks Dick all right so we're going to move along out of facilities to our report from Kim Meyer on curriculum and philosophy. Kim?
Thanks Helen I'm going to keep it brief because we've covered and touched upon a lot of these things tonight in our building administrators report but we did have a meeting and covered first questions about SEL for our teachers during the crisis. Esther gave a great overview about the supports and things that we're doing to really support the staff as they're doing yeoman's work during this time. Many of them you know managing their own family's education at the same time so she talked about having check ins with staff consistent communication trying to push out info once per week so that they're meeting in their PLCs and you know really talked about connecting them to resources such as the five hours of free counseling services that's provided through HR. And then working on helping them get their classrooms cleaned out as Patty and and shared and Mike has talked about in before. So they're really you know I want to thank the central office for the support you know and our building administrators for the support of of our staff during this time. We also just touched on some things that we've covered here tonight mainly updates on remote instruction and support. I thought an interesting stat that Mr. Andruski shared was that there were I believe he said quote tell me if I'm wrong ten thousand seesaw posts per week when they're usually seeing five hundred per week so there's been a lot of activity which I thought was really exciting to to hear about. And I think also we we really recognize that this is not perfect process and the good news is our team has been responsive to problems as they've come up. And that we really want to thank and and appreciate especially our principals for the problem solving with their teams that they're doing. You know whether it's handing out technology or trying to track down students who aren't in attendance in our online classes. Everyone is really working extra hard as we know and again we're not saying it's perfect but we're really being responsive and in conversations I've had with other you know districts across the state I can say that SAU sixteen is really performing at the top of of the list when it comes to the circumstances that we're dealing with so thank you. Again we talked about end of the school year updates which Sharon Mike and Patty have covered fairly well tonight here. You know really making sure that especially our you know things that we don't think about maybe in our daily life but you know having retirees staff retirees coming in to clean their classrooms out you know leaving for the last time which is you know emotional especially amidst this so thank you for taking those things into consideration when you're talking about the end of the school year. Mike did share that there's a hundred and seventy five days required of our seniors and that happily Mike Mr. Monahan we are going to be able to let them graduate early and ending on May twenty seventh their last academic day. So thank you for upholding that tradition. Which is wonderful and then we also did had an update on summer intervention academy. Of course we discussed here tonight that it will be remote. And that Anne Hadwin is really working on identifying the skills that students are missing not just for our students who are on IEPs but understanding that the need is going to be higher given the remote learning environment and that we know not all of our students are potentially thriving under this remote learning situation. thriving under this remote learning situation. I thought it was interesting that Anne was talking about the collection of data in trying to build skills and get, get us thinking about the competencies we want our students to be possessing, you know, when they return in the fall and what we need to get there. Sorry, I'm breezing through this, I know, but it's late, right? And lastly, we covered as a CMS update, Ms. Pons gave us an update in terms of the discussions around the new schedule at CMS and we just simply asked how will this support social and emotional learning and competency-based education? And she really did a nice job of reminding us about how SEL is going to be addressed by maintaining our team structure and our house structure there and providing that intervention and enrichment block. Advisory period will still be intact. Talking about the SEL assessment, that's, is it DSSA, Patty? In terms of the name of the assessment that allows us to really assess where our kids are in terms of our SEL? And, and then of course she already touched upon, you know, going to the competency-based piece, the eye-ready trainings, aligning our professional development really to talk about CB for our teachers and then how, again, Anne Hadwin is such a great resource for professional development in our district and has been quite, quite an asset as we knew, already knew she was, but. And then lastly, we talked about additional training that's happening. Patty already touched on tonight, some of that training that's, that's happened. And I thought it was interesting that Patty also shared that they did a survey in terms of enrichment pieces and that there were quite a few enrichment ideas from the science and social studies areas that involved interdisciplinary opportunities. So that's quite exciting to hear about. And lastly, I know Patty and Bill are working hard in the scheduling piece, that there is a meeting with the UA teachers to really discuss another version of the schedule and then based on that feedback, I think Bill has come back to the drawing board and my understanding is on Friday, you'll be meeting again, Patty and Bill, with the UA teachers to discuss the current schedule as it stands. And with, with that, that concludes my summary tonight, Helen.
Thank you so much, Kim. Are there any questions? Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for Kim?
Not seeing any hands, Helen.
All right then. Thank you so much, Kim, for that all-inclusive report. I know that under new business, Bob had just a quick comment he had raised with me earlier today regarding retirees. Bob, did you want to address that?
Bob, you're still muted.
I've been in contact with some of the retirees this year and, you know, a lot of them have been in the district 20, 30 years. And unfortunately, their experience of being scheduled to come in and pick up their items from their classroom has been emotional and draining and really empty because the school's empty. Every, you know, it's just a terrible ending for a career teacher in that district. And I was just wondering if there's something that we can do for these people because it's, it's not fair. Even myself as a retiree, I had a wonderful party and these people are having nothing and I just, I struggle with this.
Well, I could, I could address very quickly, Bob, with you, that there was a plan before the pandemic hit to hold a huge reception for the retirees over at the Portsmouth, I think it was the Elks Club if I'm not mistaken. And then of course, everything had to come to an end. And my understanding is that the hope is that once we're able to gather again, that there will be a postponed celebration for them. It will be, you know, something that would be, I'm sure board members would be invited, faculty would be invited to it. So I'm not sure if you were thinking along those lines, but there, the plan is at this point in time that everything is on hold until a later date.
That's exactly what I had in mind. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. And as soon as, by the way, my husband was asked to emcee that, so as soon as I know, you'll know.
It's just right now, it's very disappointing for our retirees.
I understand, I understand.
30 years worth of.
I agree. Totally agree. I agree, thank you. All right, is there any other new business to come before the board? We do have to go into non-public briefly, but if there's any other, are there any other questions at all or comments relative for new business?
Helen, not, not seeing anything, Helen.
Thank you. All right then, so if we could entertain a motion to go into non-public under chapter 91a3-2c on personnel, we have a motion to go into non-public?
So moved.
Travis, thank you. A second?
Second.
Bob, thank you. I'll poll the board. Travis?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we are in non-public at 8:09 PM.